Good evening and welcome to the August 20th, 2020, meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I'd like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices to avoid interrupting our meeting. I'd like to indicate that our meeting is being conducted now virtually through Zoom, and I want to express on behalf of the board, the patience, our appreciation for the patience that the community, our parents and students and others are showing as we work virtually. We're doing our best to make sure that we stay in contact with the community and making sure that we have community input regarding our board proceedings. Remember that we asked the community to submit to us testimony, video testimony or written testimony expressing your interest in the issues before us. Please do so. We will post those on board docs for board members viewing as well as for the communities viewing, so we encourage you to do that. The first 15 video or written will in fact be made available to the public. We also encourage the public to do as you are doing to continue to email us, write us about all the concerns that you may have regarding our school system. Ms. Queen, would you at this point lead us in the board's prayer and pledge of allegiance? You're on mute, Ms. Queen.
I'm sorry, yes, I will. Thank you. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom and understanding. Amen. I'll pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Queen, for that. Ms. Tate, at this point, would you please call the role?
Sure. Ms. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Here.
Mr. Burrows. Mr. Montero.
Here.
Mr. Murray. Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Ms. Queen.
Present.
Mrs. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Swan.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
And Dr. Thornton.
Present, and thank you, Ms. Tate, and as usual, Ms. Tate and Ms. King, and to the board staff, thank you all for the work that you do in preparation for our board meetings and the support that you provide for the Board of Education. It is deeply appreciated. Colleagues, we now have a meeting before us, and a motion to approve it is in order.
Don't move.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Ms. Queen and Mr. Swan that the agenda for our meeting today be approved. Hearing no questions or comments, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the adoption is unanimous. Colleagues, if you'll now turn your attention to our minutes for June 25th of the board, a motion to approve is in order.
Don't move.
Second.
It's been properly moved again by Ms. Queen and Mr. Swan that the minutes of the Board of Education of Prince George's County of June 25th be adopted. Any questions or discussion of the minutes, modifications of the minutes? Hearing no questions or modifications regarding the minutes, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the approval of the minutes of June 25th is unanimous. Colleagues, I have a brief chair report. I'd like to first of all, ask for a moment of silence for the members of our family or their family members who passed since the last time we met. Mr. Lawrence Larry Daniels, Schrader, who's the father of Douglas Schrader, Chief Accountability Officer for our school system. Ms. Shirley Slater, Human Resources Assistant, Human Resources Operations and Staffing Office for our school system, and Norris Edward Millard, Night Custodian at Oxon Hill High School. If you would join me in a moment of silence for those three individuals. Thank you very much. If you would please keep their families in your thoughts and your prayers. Keep in mind that the Board of Education has put before the community, thanks to the leadership of Ms. Ahmed, she was the chair when this happened, and Ms. Boozer Struther was the vice chair. Ms. Boozer Struther is now the chair of the committee, and Ms. Ahmed is the vice chair. The board put before the committee two major policies, recommendations for comment. Those policy recommendations, five to 10, and those comments are due in by September 1st at 5:00 PM. Ms. Ahmed, do you have any comments as the prior chair about that? We just appreciate what your committee did in preparing those policies.
No, Mr. Chair, but I know that one of those policies was authored by Mr. Wallace, so he may have something if you would like to recognize.
I will do so, Mr. Wallace, that is the systemic meal steaming practices, which has obviously surfaced at a higher level of gravity. Mr. Wallace? Okay, but in his apps, I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace? You're on mute, Mr. Wallace, okay. Okay, I think we have a communications issue, Mr. Wallace, and we'll come back to you, but if you don't have a chance to comment, I do want the community to know and remind the board of the extensive work that you did raising the issue of systemic meal shaming practices in our school system that led to the modification that has been for our community, which has even been made even more evident by the COVID-19 pandemic. So, thank you, Mr. Wallace, and thank you to the Policy and Governance Committee for responding. Mr. Wallace? Okay. The board recess, which is obvious, has ended. We're back, and it's good to see everybody, and glad that everybody survived the COVID-19 issue and masked up and was at a safe distance. We will hold, very importantly, a virtual retreat tomorrow, Board of Education will, starting at nine o'clock, and there will be a public session in the morning that the public will have an opportunity to view, and then we'll go into executive session to deal with some executive session items. I have invited, and they've accepted, our counter executive and our chair of council to briefly greet the board. I don't think we've met with them, we'll have an opportunity to do so during the year, I'm going to make that possible, but tomorrow they will greet us and make some very, very brief comments before we go into our retreat. I think everybody working recognizes now the great work that this Board of Education is doing and the great work that Dr. Gosson is doing in our school system is doing, and it's important for people to recognize that. We will also tomorrow at our retreat start a discussion with our CEO of the Prince George's County Strategic Plan Process, so we're really looking forward to that. Dr. Gosson, your presentation tomorrow and board comments regarding the strategic plan for our school system. It'll give us an opportunity to obviously re-envision education and some of the crossroads that we're dealing with that will take us over the next decade. We'd ask the community to please check our website for information regarding board upcoming meetings and committee meetings. I want to re-emphasize, just to stress the importance of the three major committees that we have stood up and are functioning very well, and the public is engaging with those committees. I serve on the Budget and Fiscal Affairs Operations Committee, but each one of them engaging with the community, digging deeply into affairs of our school system. So, for the public who is signing into those committees and to the chair and vice chair of leadership, I want to thank you all very much. Opening of schools that Dr. Gosson will comment on much later, which will begin on August 31st, and we're looking forward to a great first day of school under Dr. Gosson's leadership. That's my report to the board, and I want to now turn the floor to Dr. Gosson for her Chief Executive Officer report. Before she does that, Dr. Gosson, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I want to really thank you and your staff for your orientation sessions that you've had with our new teachers and our leadership, our school leadership team. I won't feel steal your thunder, but I did send to board members some of the videos regarding that, so thank you and your colleagues for what you did to make that happen. Now, Dr. Gosson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. You took a part of our team.
I'm sorry, Dr. Gosson, before you speak, Ms. Queen.
Yes, I just want clarification from you, Dr. Thornton, about the retreat tomorrow, and then make sure also these meetings, is it listed under the board, under our website? Because I'm having people text me and ask me, how do we get on there? So, can you tell us where they can find to be to connect to these meetings?
Ms. King, would you please respond?
Certainly, if you look on the featured meetings of board docs, it is indeed listed as the February 21st Board of Education Retreat, and then also as our other meetings, the Zoom login information for the public is generally on Agenda Item 1.1, Call to Order.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Now, you may proceed, Dr. Gosson.
Thank you, and good evening. It's hard to believe we're at the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year, and it's less than two weeks away. We've done our best to create a distance learning model that's going to be robust, engaging and effective without compromising equity and excellence, but we are extremely excited and eager for our students to return and learn and embark on this at-home learning experience, and we're going to do it together. Today, more than 10,000 educators had their first day at school, so welcome back to them. We're so proud to welcome new and returning faces to Team PGCPS. I want to take a few minutes just to commend our Office of Professional Learning and Leadership on their phenomenal work to host various training conferences during the summer virtually, the Summer Leadership Institute, which is for principals, our professional educator induction program, better known as PEAK for new teachers, and our Teacher Pre-Service Week, which started today, along with our Aspiring Leaders Program for Student Success, which started yesterday evening. I've heard great feedback from attendees, and I appreciate their hard work, but let's also not forget our T3 team, who's going to help to train our teachers on new ways to make learning engaging for the 2020-2021 school year. Next week, schools begin the process of distributing technology devices for those students that did not get one in the spring, Wi-Fi hotspots, textbooks and other supplies. And then on August 28th, which is next Friday, students in pre-K through grade 12 will take part of a virtual orientation mock class day to make sure everything goes smoothly in preparation for the first day of school. Schools will contact students and their families with more information, and please continue to visit our PGCPS webpage, which launched at 6:30 tonight, our new distance learning link that provides all the updated information from our Distance Learning Guide, what we call our reopening guide, as well as updated information to help parents navigate the opening of school. Please also remember that even though we're not in school in person, immunizations must still be kept up with our students, so please make sure you get your child immunized and make sure that they get to the doctor to get those shots. And lastly, once we start the school year, we'll keep you informed with our weekly Engage PGCPS newsletter. Families and students who need help with technology, navigating online platforms and other troubleshooting related to distance learning can also go to any one of our nine parent centers on Monday and Wednesdays from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That was a feature that we added after lessons learned from the spring. And in closing, I just want to thank everyone who played a role in this summer, setting up the foundation for what I know will be a successful start to the school year. The team continues to show me that we are transforming education every day. They make me PGCPS proud, and of course, we continue to be PGCPS strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gosson, and I want to, on behalf of the board, express to your team, the national, certainly regional and state footprint that you all have laid down regarding how you open schools and how you respond to the pandemic. I've made the point to all that our case is an exemplary case to be modeled for the nation, and we should, we're working hard, you're working hard, your team is working hard, and I would ask people around the nation to look at us in terms of how we are handling this issue, how we are making decisions collegially, well-inclusively, transparently, and right now with greater support from the community and our leadership. So, thank you, Dr. Gosson, for being the leader of that. Colleagues, I mentioned earlier, but I want to reiterate to the public, the public comment opportunity that the public has. Remember that written and pre-recorded video and audio testimony will be accepted from the community. The public can issue, can present to us a pre-recorded video and audio testimony that cannot exceed three minutes in duration, and we will then make those available on board docs for the public to see and for all board members to see. We're going to continue to do all we can to make sure that the public has access to this governing body, to share their concerns about the great issues that we're having to deal with. We'll now move, colleagues, to Agenda Item 4.0. Dr. Gosson, if you'll introduce Items 4.1 to 4.5.
Yes. Items 4.1 through 4.5 requires board approval of proclamations commemorating National Day of Service, National Hispanic Heritage Month, Constitution Day and Week, Library Card Sign-up Month, National Arts and Education Week.
Thank you. Colleagues, a motion is in order regarding Items 4.1 through 4.5.
Don't move.
Been properly moved and seconded that the proclamations 4.1 to 4.5 be adopted. Hearing no further discussion of questions. I'm sorry, there was someone?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
You could actually, I have a couple folks trying to get into the meeting, but apparently the information on our agenda is directing them elsewhere, so we could figure out what the issue is so that our public can join us.
Ms. King, would you please?
Yes, I just want to make sure that the public has logged into the board meeting Zoom login information, which is under the Call to Order for the Public Meeting, because if they log into the, to see the vote for executive session, they will get an error message. So, the information can be found under Agenda Item 2.1, because right now we have several people viewing our meeting.
I will let them.
Go ahead, Mr. Burrows. Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I don't know that this isn't an agenda item, so I don't know if this is appropriate time to discuss this, but I have noticed this has happened in the past before, just folks just trying to find the link to the meeting, so I don't mean to be coming out of order, but if, I feel like this link can really be very easily accessible on the website, and I don't think it should be this difficult for folks to access this, and especially with us being in month six of the pandemic. So, again, I know this isn't an agenda item, but I see this as something that's an easy fix. I don't think that the public should have to go into board docs and find this under an agenda item, just so that they can participate in our public meeting. I think that they should be able to just get to the website and just click a button that sends them right in.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Ms. King, we'll certainly give attention to this immediately after the meeting and tomorrow. And apology to the public who may have been inconvenienced in this way. Colleagues, the vote is on 4.41 and 4.5. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that the vote is unanimous. Colleague, I would ask you to, ask the public to please read those proclamations, because it really, each of them reflects vision values of this Board of Education. Recommendation regarding operations budget and fiscal affairs. I'm going to recognize Ms. Williams for an opening comment regarding this item 4.6. Ms. Williams? You're on mute.
Sorry about that.
Ms. Williams is the Chair of the Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. That committee is chaired by Ms. Williams, and the vice chair of that committee is Ms. Queen. Ms. Williams?
Sorry about that, all of my papers just fell down. Okay. And I just need, which section are we on? I just lost my complete.
I can, I can, I can deal with it if you want me to, Ms. Williams, while you're looking for it.
No, I just need the agenda item number so I can get to it, that's all.
4.6.
Oh, 4.6, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, everyone. Last week, the Obama Committee met, and we had a lot of discussion around our work plan for this year. We have a number of items that are reoccurring items that will come up. We're looking at, of course, planning our next year's budget, and with that, we have, we will be asking our board members to provide recommendations for the priorities for us to consider as a part of the budget. So, in the next couple days, the members of the board will be given a survey, asking for them to provide five recommendations on board priorities that we can then send to Dr. Gosson to make a part of the budget. And also, for all budget committee chairs, we will be asking for five recommendations from the committee chairs to make recommendations on priorities from their committee. So, I look forward to us having a lot of input and engagement on this, as we do every year, and also, I just want to take this moment to just recognize the previous committee chair, K. Alexander Wallace, for his work for the last, past several years on helping lead us through successful budget years, so I just wanted to thank him. Thank you, Dr. Gosson.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is a motion to authorize the survey of board members regarding priorities. A motion is in order to that effect.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approve the issuance of a priority request to board members, as indicated by the chair. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that that is unanimous, and thank you and Ms. Queen for your work on the committee, and I'm pleased to be a member of that committee. We'll now move to Item 5.0, the Budget Consent Agenda. Dr. Gosson, would you please introduce Items 5.1 to 5.2?
Sure. Items 5.1 and 5.2 requires board approval of the expenditures requirements for September 2020 and the enterprise-wide notification system.
Thank you, Dr. Gosson, for that. A motion is in order for discussion, and I think there was, there was one clarification that Mr. Rose will provide regarding 5.2 to Ms. Ahmed. So, Mr. Rose, you'll follow up on that.
Sure, so, so move, I think I'll make the motion.
Yes. A motion is in order for discussion.
Don't move.
It's been properly, who made the motion?
Ms. Ahmed.
Mr. Swan, and seconded by Ms. Queen for discussion, and the discussion would be on, is there a need, Ms. Ahmed and Mr. Rose, to discuss 5.2, or can we vote?
I would request just a clarification from Mr. Rose on the cost savings.
Mr. Rose, please. Thank you.
Sure, so thank you, yes, so this particular item actually will combine three of our current communication systems in the school system, and it is estimated to provide the school district a $219,000 a year cost savings, so that's what this motion and the board action summary will ultimately yield.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for raising that, and Mr. Rose, for your response. Colleagues, any other questions regarding Items 5.1 and 5.2? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The ayes have it, Ms. King, let the record reflect that it's unanimous, and thank you. Dr. Gosson, we will now give the floor to you to update the board regarding the Fall 20 reopening plan, and if you, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So, as you all are aware, the final recovery plan was posted on our PGCPS website on Friday, August 14th, as required by the Maryland State Department of Education. I want to thank our community members and staff who provided input. We updated the document every week for three weeks and highlighted those revisions in a different color so that our staff and community could see the changes that we made, and so that they could also see that their input was valued. What's most important to note about that, the school day will begin based on the school's regular bell schedule time. Instruction will take place every day, Monday through Friday, and Wednesdays have been designated for small group instruction and providing instruction for students who need that additional support, such as our special education students, our English language learners, our talented and gifted students, as well as an opportunity for teachers to have one-on-one for those students who just need support in learning the content from the previous days. So, and lastly, students engaged in, they will also engage in small group instruction on Wednesday, and those who are not doing that small group instruction will be doing independent work that will have to be turned in to their teachers on that day as well. Meal distribution, just want to remind everyone, will take place on Monday and Wednesdays from our 206 schools from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we have over 100 communities that will have meals delivered to those communities if their homes are more than 1.5 miles away from any neighboring school, so you don't have to attend that school to get a meal. The locations of those bus stops can be found on our new distance learning website link that is just gone live this evening. Meals begin August 31st, obviously, that's our first day of school, but it's important to note that if you are not a free and reduced meals recipient, you must pay for meals. Breakfast is $1.60 for both elementary and secondary students, and lunch is $2.75 for elementary students and $3 for secondary students, so that's middle and high. We started a series of workshops and supports to our special education parents, so I want to thank the Department of Special Education for hosting four virtual parent workshops from August 13th until August 27th. Their very first workshop, they had 800 participants. We want to thank our community for being engaged, and we look forward to that continued engagement. The topics of those four workshops are empowering parents and students for mastering distance learning, tips for planning, organizing and self-advocacy. The second one is creating a just right learning environment. The third one is etiquette to promote success with distance learning, and the last one is what non-public parents need to know about distance learning and non-public programming. If you can't participate in the live sessions, we are recording all of them so that you can have future access to those presentations. In addition, since we published the very first document of our reopening plan July 17th, we've been fast at work trying to find ways to do our special education assessment plan, and so I'm grateful to our new Associate Superintendent for Special Education, Ms. Trinell Bowman, who has created a hybrid approach and a virtual approach for assessment. We will use the support from Presence Learning, which is a leading provider for live, online special education related services and can assist with doing virtual cycle educational assessments. So, we will be using them for virtual assessments, as well as using them for a hybrid approach. And the hybrid approach, that means that there might be some cases where we have some students who, based on either the age of the examony or referral questions and suspected disabilities, that don't lend itself best to a virtual assessment. And in that case, if we have situations where it needs to be in-person, we'd have to get parent permission, and of course, we would assess, take temperatures of their student before they came in to take the assessment, but we will do a few in-person psychometric assessments for our special education student. And for our English language learners, we were able to gain a grant from our federal government that will allow us to provide tutoring services for several of our middle schools, tend to be exact, and those 10 targeted middle schools had schools with the lowest percent of students making progress on our English proficiency exam. And so, we'll be able to use those funds to help provide that support, and we're extremely grateful for the part of the CARESAD grant to be able to do that. The creation of our nine parent centers honestly and truly came birth out of our feedback from parents in the spring, and many of our Latinx parent members who wanted to go to a brick and mortar place to get assistance. And so, if you look at our guide, you'll find all nine locations. They'll start on Monday, August 31st, this year before. Once again, the times are 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then they open back again from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM to try to accommodate even working parents. And in addition to providing support for our English language learners in terms of tutoring, we also will be offering virtual training for parents with interpreters on how to use several of our programs, our software programs, and those programs are such as Imagine Learning, Reading A-Z, Brain Pop, Listen Wise and Speak Agent. And then we'll be making a purchase of 26,700 Oxford Picture dictionaries to help our first, our students who are learning English for the first time in both the elementary and secondary language for language acquisition and understanding content. For our language immersion students, from some of our community feedback, we found that many of our parents in our language immersion programs needed additional support. So, one of the So one of the concerns that they raised was how could they support their students? So we will be using CARES Act money to also provide tutoring for our language immersion students and purchasing Grab and Go books for students in grades K to eight in French, Spanish, and Chinese that also our parents can guide along with our students, even though that's not their language. And as shared in my opening, we will have distribution of materials starting next week. Many of those materials, as I shared before, are workbooks, textbooks, if they're not online and necessary. And once again, we've had three distributions of laptops, twice in the fall, once this summer. So it's really for those students who did not get a device before or that are new joining the PGCPS family. So schools have sent that information out for the pickup and distribution. What's also important is that in the spring, 15,000 families assisted us by allowing their children to use their personal devices. And we're continuing to ask those families if they will continue to do that. That's because we have made a purchase of 50,000 additional technology devices. Of course, you know, across the nation, many places are now moving to distance learning. And so there's a need across the nation for everyone to use technology. We have thus far, out of that 50,000, since April, received 27,000 of the devices that we purchased. And we still are in need of... Still in need of 36,000 of those devices to come in. So, once they come in, we will replace those personal devices with the devices that we have purchased. So if you're able to allow your child to use a personal device, please continue to allow them to do that. And when the new ones come in, we'll replace them with the new ones. So, that concludes our recovery reopening plan. As stated before, the final plan can be found on our website. And of course, as shared before, we had a summary of, at the end of July, on our plan. And these are just additional items that were added since the last time we met. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson, for that comprehensive update. And now I will recognize board colleagues, starting with Mr. Swan.
Mr. Chair.
Starting with Mr. Swan.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Golson, for that update. Two quick questions. When do we expect, do we have an estimated arrival date for the, for the second shipment of Chromebooks? And can you give us an update on the Wi-Fi hotspots? Have we given out any more of those and how many we have left? And are we letting families know who may not have taken advantage of that in the spring, that that's available?
We have 6,500 iPads that we're expecting to receive between, by next Tuesday. 11,700 Chromebooks that are expected to be delivered mid-September. 18,358 touch Chromebooks that are expected to be delivered mid-October. And your second question around hotspots, we delivered 1,172 hotspots in the spring. And those students who need additional ones, we will provide hotspots for the opening of school. We have a process to distribute those as well.
And we have enough inventory?
As of now, we made a purchase of 5,000 hotspots.
Okay.
Yeah. But once again, remember, many of our families do use our Comcast Essentials in order to use Wi-Fi. So if they're a family who gets free and reduced meals, they'll use Comcast Essentials. Hotspots are not for everyone.
Got it. Got it. Do we know how many we have on Essentials? Just ballpark, a few.
We do, because we pay that bill every month.
Sure. Dr. Golson, it's, we have 3,600 families currently who are taking advantage of the Comcast Essentials program. And the yield is actually 13,000 families. So we are going to do a mass communication to those who are still eligible to make sure that they are aware. But currently, since April, 3,600 families have taken advantage of that program.
Got you. And just to be, just refresh my memory, I remember us talking about this months ago. But the essential program gives them free internet or discount like what, and we pay the different, like, how does that work?
We're paying, it's not free. We're, the school district, thanks to your, thanks to your leadership and other Golsons' recommendation, we're currently paying the bill each month. They bill us per month for all 3,600. And we'll continue that through the rest of the school year. So we're one of the few, one of the only school districts in the country that actually has a formal agreement with Comcast in order to pay that bill.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. It's just another example of the exemplary work of the board and Dr. Golson in this.
Absolutely.
Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. Two quick questions, one around students with special needs. And glad to hear we've made that partnership. You know, the research is showing that students with special needs, particularly those who benefit from sort of being face-to-face, are being probably the most disadvantaged. Can you talk a little bit more about that, particularly those, those special needs students who traditionally get sort of occupational therapy, a lot of hands-on therapy, they would get face-to-face? Secondly, my question around, I know we talked about offering staff the opportunity to go into the building and recommended that they be in their classroom and even gave them, at least, there was talk about giving them the option to bring their children to school. Some of the board colleagues may have been received emails from administrators from around the county who have said they would like the same sort of privilege, either come in or not. Can we talk a little bit about instructions and recommendations to staff and administrators around what the expectations are about them being in the building, how many days a week, hours, hours a week, and the like? Thank you.
Yep. So all of our students' individualized education plans will be revised to support a virtual learning program. And through that virtual learning program, we still are providing supplemental services, speech pathology, et cetera, through virtual experience. We are not offering small group instruction in person for any of our students due to the continued increase in COVID-19 cases. Once it is safe to do so, of course, as I stated before in July 15th, that we will reassess where we are as a county in December. And hopefully, we will be able to have those in-person experiences in February. Believe the model that we are offering through virtual, though, on Wednesday day has been designated to provide that small group instruction piece so we can meet the needs and support of our students from that whole class to small group instruction. In addition, as I stated before, we'll still have their supplemental services as identified in the revised IEPs to support this virtual learning plan. In terms of our employees, we are still at Phase 2. For our employees, we released a recovery plan to all employees in June. That plan is still in effect. And what that means is that limited identified staff report to our facilities on Mondays and Wednesdays. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday is telework. All employees are expected to work every day, just depends on their location, as stated before. If they're unable to do that, they must complete the form, CARES Act form, or appropriately based on either childcare concerns or high-risk areas that they also need to request that those accommodations that we provided in Phase 2 prohibit their ability to do that. As stated before, and we will continue at Phase 2 until we're able to move past Phase 2 as a state and a county. We have not moved from that for the state or the county. And until then, we will continue in this form of employees reporting to work until further notice.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Ms. Jackson and then Ms. Queen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Golson, just two quick questions. I know in the reopening guidelines, there was mention of a curriculum bridging document. And I was wondering if that document would be made accessible to either the board or the public. And then the second question being, you mentioned the grant that we were awarded for our ELL students, specifically going towards tutoring for middle school students. And I was wondering if there's a possibility of, you know, similar grants that we could gain but towards tutoring for our high school ELL students?
Yep. So the first one, a bridging document is a curriculum document that a teacher uses in order to direct their delivery of instruction. So it's one that's only accessible for staff. Because you have a PGCPS email address and you're considered a staff member, you can access it through the staff portal, go to Curriculum Documents. And when you see a wheel of all the content areas on the far right, you'll see those content bridging documents. In terms of the CARES Act tutoring funds, it's actually funds that can be used for K-12. I highlighted those two areas because those are areas that we wanted to concentrate on for English language learners and language immersion. But we do have an opportunity to provide that tutoring support K-12 through that grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And Ms. Queen?
I have a couple of questions. First, I'll start with what Mr. Valentine started off with, because I've actually received a lot of these calls. So I just want a little clarification. So you're saying administrators and, you know, even our cafeteria workers right now, everybody is on a Monday and Wednesday and Tuesday and Thursday teleworking?
You missed a day, because we still work on Fridays. So Monday and Wednesday is, once again, Monday and Wednesday is in physical, is in our building. So food distribution is on Monday and Wednesdays. I actually go into our facility assessor on Monday and Wednesdays. And on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, I telework. That's the same plan that those employees who've been identified for Phase 2 are on. If you're still in, if you're in Phase 3, you're doing telework Monday through Friday. And our employee guide explains who's in Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3.
Okay. So people, okay. Okay. So my next question also is about the meals plan. So let's say, for instance, if I have three elementary school kids, but then I have like a five-year-old who's not in school. But when I bring them to the school, I purchase a meal with a person be able to get a meal, because you don't want to feed some of your kids and then the other kid getting something different. And of course, a little sibling on one with their kids. Are we going to be still, will people be able to buy extra meals, in other words?
Yeah. So, no. So what happens under the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the meal distribution process that we had for the spring and the summer is concluding. And so we are now under a regular distribution meal program. What we are doing is a little bit of flexibility by bringing those meals to neighborhoods for those who are more than 1.5-mile walking distance. But we must follow the federal guidelines for meals. And so students will type in their PIN number, like they normally would if they were at school. They will get their meal, it'll reflect in their account, and then they can go back home.
Okay. So help me understand, so when people visit our schools and they eat lunch with the kids, they don't pay for meals or they're not allowed to get meals?
So they do. Under adult, they pay the adult price. They don't pay the student price.
Okay. So that's when I, so if they needed an extra meal, they still...
They should definitely pay that adult.
Okay. That's what I, okay. So, and my, another question I have is about communication. Because even since we've been online, several times, you guys have not been able to hear me. Even today, my, one of my other phones, which I know I record all the time and go live so people can see, it went down. Our connections are so bad going virtual. Even with virtual learning, a lot of people are going to have that problem. I actually had to pick up the Comcast Essential for one of my daughters downstairs and use my retired Verizon. So it's like, I'm working with two internets here, and I'm still getting bad connections. So I'm looking at what the parents would be going through at home when their kids are getting a bad connection or class, when they got to go all day long. How are we going to be, and how are we going to look at that? How are teachers looking at that when kids get cut off and then they may take turns a while to get them back on? Have we taken all of that into consideration?
Yes, we have. And we've actually included that in our distance learning guide so that students aren't penalized for technology issues, but they must communicate. It's just like we did earlier, if someone gets booted off, someone typically texts to let someone know or they call. Even though we're not in the building, our phones are forwarded to support staff on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. So communication is key. And lastly, you know, this has happened several times, but typically, when you have a lot of people on and they're streaming with the camera on, there may be a need to also shut the camera piece off, which allows additional bandwidth.
Okay. And then my last comment is, I'm constantly getting calls from people, and I've constantly heard it on Facebook, and I really need you to clarify this. You stated at our last board meeting that uniforms would not be required, but some principals in some school are telling people, well, if you can wear a uniform, shirt, or whatever. But I'm having a problem with that and so are some of my parents. But we have to realize as a board and as a school system that it is still some people who don't have a job. It's bad enough, and what's going on with COVID, that they have to stay home. Their utilities are going up now because the kid's going to have more Wi-Fi and devices. Electricity is being used more, lights are being used more, I mean, water, whatever. The things that normally from eight, whatever, the kids at school, lights are out. These things were not being done. So these people have, these parents...
Ms. Queen, you only have time for Dr. Golson to respond, so you need to...
Okay. Well, let her, she understand what I'm saying. Go ahead.
Dr. Golson, please.
We have addressed this issue, and there are no uniforms from August 31st until January 29th. It can be found on page 78 of the guide.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. First, I'd like to again thank Dr. Golson and her staff for the leadership and the work around reopening the schools under COVID. A lot of my questions were asked, but I still have a few more. I just want to get clarification on the use of the towers at the school. Is that still operable? Are parents still allowed?
They are still available. And that's just a reminder, we have Wi-Fi hotspots on all 206 of our schools and offices. So if anyone in those areas need to use Wi-Fi, they can get on our network for free.
And they can get on it if they're using their own device also?
Yep. All you got to do is sign in with your PGCPS email address.
Okay, great. My next question is around the new financial situation that some families may find themselves in under COVID. What is, where can they find the information to apply for free and reduced lunch?
It will be posted online. And of course, they can go to any of the parent centers if they need to get a hard copy of that form. And they have until October 31st to submit their applications.
Okay. Thank you so much. My other question is around non-classroom staff assignments, such as the nurses, bus drivers, and office administration staff. I think it's amazing that we're able to keep all of our employees employed during this time where other businesses are going out of business or they can't keep their employees in place. So what is the assignment for those non-classroom staff members?
We have listed in our recovery guide the roles of all non-classroom-based positions. They begin on page 53 in the guide and go all the way to page 59. Sorry, actually go to page 64. So I know you don't want me to use up all your times, actually 65. Many of those bus drivers will be used to deliver meals as well as continue to go through professional development training. And the other two groups that you mentioned are also listed in the guide as well.
Great. My one last question is about if we are so lucky to get out of COVID and we're able to return after the second quarter, what is the prep for the building to allow the students to return and parents to feel comfortable allowing their students to come back? And I mean, in terms of, of like the instructions on how to walk six feet apart.
I got it. I want to thank our own print shop staff, who's already created decals for floors, walls, et cetera. Those items will start to be placed in schools once we begin the full opening after August 31st. We wanted to wait until all of the distribution and materials were done so that we could make sure that they were placed appropriately and won't come up before its time. We made major purchases of PPE as well as, and then included in that PPE are masks for students, cloth masks for our students, as well as hand sanitizer as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. And my one last comment is, I want to thank you for the diploma distribution for those students that participated. And the ones that I met during the distribution, they were so appreciative to be able to take that moment and walk across the stage and be acknowledged. So thank you.
Thank you all for allowing me the flexibility to find a way to do it safely.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Ms. Semet?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Dr. Golson, thank you so much to you and your team for putting together this plan of action. I know it took a lot of time, a lot of input from members of the community, from staff, et cetera. I wanted, I know a number of my colleagues have already talked about some of the emails that we've been getting when it comes to staff members going back in person in any capacity or in full capacity in our school buildings. And so, and I know that you've reiterated the importance that we have and the value we give to safety in schools. I just wonder, is there a way to communicate that, again, to members of our staff that are concerned about it, because I'm as equally concerned? And I think it makes sense to have some standardized communication, especially when it comes to, we're starting school soon. I just want you to, that's clearly addressed by folks, because it was concerning to me to see so many folks reaching out in concern of that, that item. The other thing is, it's still a little bit unclear to me how funds will be reallocated to operate in a distance learning environment versus an in-person learning system. And so, I mean, in my head, I would imagine, and I'm not, you know, Chief Herbsman, he knows. And I fully trust your team to be able to do that type of analysis. But I think it would be really helpful to understand if we have any cost savings from, you know, not doing events or travel or in-person operations in a full capacity for the next six months. And I know we have a transference item that comes before... item that comes before our board every year, but even before that, I think it, it makes sense to understand what are those cost differentials that we have from being in person to being remote, and then how do we plan on spending that money? Not only for us, but also for members of the public and also your strategic plan. Just putting a clear understanding of how many millions are we putting and reallocating to serve our students during this time? Is it possible for you to provide a report on that or some documentation or something like that?
I can, but it's really important. It's gonna be a short report because it's important for us to remember, I'm gonna start with the funds and then I'll go back to staff. Is that 80% of our budget is around staffing, and because we're not letting any staff go, we're not having a major savings. In addition, because of COVID-19, we've experienced more expenses than we would have had a saving. We did not expect to purchase PPE for 136,000 students or additional hand sanitizer, and though we're extreme or signage, you know, and making sure that it's in all of our buildings in the abundance that we needed. And though we're extremely grateful for the federal funds that we receive for CARES Act, what's important to know is that initially we had to pay those funds upfront. And we still have not received all of those funds yet. So it's almost as if we've dipped into our savings accounts to pay until we get the check to reimburse ourselves. So it, there's, so when we think there's a savings, our buildings are open Monday through Friday. Our custodial staff is still in them. So if people believe that we're saving electricity, we're not. Because our buildings are still open and we don't want them to go dormant because when it does, then people tend to come in and decide that they want to take our valuables. So they're open Monday, every day, I want to be very clear on that. And once again, we're still paying our staff. So when we look at a savings, it's not gonna be that's a, a large savings. Hence is why we continue to find places where we can reduce as we go into the FY22 fiscal year budgeting process. So that's.
Dr. Thornton, just one follow-up question with Dr. Golson, if that's okay, if I have time. Are, knowing that we don't have students in, physically in our buildings for the next six months, is there gonna be an emphasized priority on doing some of the big HVAC system project, systemic projects for our capital programs and that kind of thing? What, how was, how will our capital plans change?
What we have learned from four projects that right now going on with HVAC, COVID-19 still has impacted even those projects in terms of getting materials on time. Staff having to still continue to social distance or create, who are fixing those HVAC issues. And then also running into issues from our buildings being old. So we're being cautious, though we have four major HVAC projects, they are now delayed because of those major factors. So we are doing our best, and luckily, our kids aren't in school right now, or we would have a major situation happening. So and I've alerted those board members who schools that impacted. So we just have to be cautious of how we approach it.
Thank you, Dr. Golson.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Golson. Mr. Burrows? Mr. Burrows?
Yes, and Dr. Golson, I just want to, once again, recognize your team for this really robust plan and really the reflective nature of the plan. I mean, I think we have dramatically improved since the last day of school. And so we're gonna walk into this school year, you know, more prepared to serve our most vulnerable students. I guess my, my question is, I still worry about those students who struggled when they were in the classroom. And now they're at home without a loving teacher able to jack them up or say, pick your hip off, off the desk and do your work, you know, what will happen? So I guess my question is, what sort of professional development are we giving to teachers? What, what role are principals playing and really trying to figure out how to reach students who were already struggling when they were in the classroom or, you know, were already in some ways disconnected? Because I feel like in this virtual setting, it might be easier for those students to, to slip through the cracks. And so what, what professional development are we giving to teachers about, like, reaching those, those type of students?
Yeah, so there's several places in our guide where you'll see that we're talking and addressing what we're calling disconnected youth. So I'm glad you used that same terminology. And we'll be using some of our nonprofit partners to go directly to homes to locate students. If you look at the pages that I referenced for Board Member Williams, a lot of our non-classroom base are gonna help with contacting those students who don't show up in attendance. I mean, it's still very important that our parents communicate with us. So sometimes, at least at the elementary level, the lack of a student being online in the morning could be a daycare component piece. Not necessarily a level of engagement or not wanting to be engaged. It really is around our youngest honor in daycare, and we're trying to be as flexible with that. If you notice, we do now have a hybrid approach at the elementary level around recorded and, and live lessons in order to help to accommodate that request. And so that helps that piece. But the other piece is that I also sent to you all a video that I did for our teachers and for our principals. And I have asked our teachers as well to step up and, and to, to truly engage with our students, to be flexible, making sure that they reach out to the families and support our students during this time. And in many cases, teachers did do that in the spring. They found very creative and innovative ways to connect to our students, and we'll continue to do the same. What we did add this time, I think that will help our students is the social-emotional component piece and that daily lesson around social-emotional. Our professional school counselors doing small group support, and our mental health providers in those 80s schools providing the small group therapy piece as well. I, I, there's no question about, I think we all worry. But 40,000 of our middle school and high school students have shown me this summer that if we just allow them the opportunity to do a virtual learning experience when they're asking for it, that they will excel. And that 40,000 or 40,000 students, 34,000 middle school students who participated in our virtual summer learning program for a whole month and in the remaining were high school students. Some for original credit and some for credit recovery. And so I think our kids are a lot more resilient and are willing to step up to the plate. And from the emails that I received today from lots of teachers who watched my opening for today, they're really ready to take on the challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Bur, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is that it, Dr. Golson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burrows and Dr. Golson. And Dr. Golson, thank you for this update. Ms. Queen?
Yes.
You have something else? Please, please.
I do. Another question, Dr. Golson. Because some are coming back on Mondays and Wednesdays. I just want to know, are we doing a temperature check or are we asking them, have they been out the country or traveled for the last two weeks? I think that's very important that we be doing, doing that for people who are coming in our buildings because some people do have to come back on Mondays and Wednesdays. So if we have people come in, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that people who are coming in and just not coming to work, if they have a temperature, no, you can't come in here and affect someone else. Or if they've been out of the country within the last week or traveled, no, you can't come. I think that's important that we doing that. So I just want to make sure that we are doing it. And I'm, I'm glad that, and before you answer that, I just want to say as a last statement, I'm glad that you emphasize on teachers being flexible. Because I remember when we went to this emergency online learning, some of the teachers wasn't. And even as a grandparent who was trying to help my granddaughter, I couldn't figure out when she had a lesson, how to get it uploaded. And you guys know I do everything from video, and so thank God I had a printer. I had to take a picture of a homework, then I had to send it to my email and get it uploaded. But everybody don't know how to do that. And it was really a lot. So parents had to go through a lot and some parents couldn't get it done. So I really need to emphasize that teachers really gotta be flexible because everybody don't have printers in their homes. You know, everybody don't, don't have the luxury of doing all these things, and some of the parents really don't know. So we really have to look into all of that also. But thank you so very much. Can you answer that one question, though?
Yep. So we currently do our own self-check now for all employees who are in phase two. Though we have touchless thermometers that we purchased, our plan is to use those upon our return in February. I check my temperature every day, 97.0 today. Once again, I don't think anybody's taking folks out of the country, but out of the state, yes, if people have left out of the state, they do need to self-quarantine at home for those 14 days, but they must communicate with their supervisor. So that we can determine whether a telework plan can be in place.
Thank you, Dr. Golson and Ms. Queen for those questions. Now, colleagues, and again, thank you, Dr. Golson, for this update. As we promised the community, you would regularly update the Board of Education regarding our school reopening plans, so thank you for doing that. Colleagues, we'll now move to item 8.1, the CIP FY2227 as a first reader. Dr. Golson, would you please introduce that item?
Item 8.1 requires board approval of the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022 through 2027 as a first reader.
Thank you, colleagues. A motion is in order for discussion regarding 8.1. Is there a second? It's been probably moved to second. Does this be introduced as a first reader? I recognize Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Dr. Goldson, I know that there are a lot of 20-page documents, bits and pieces of what would be the full 280, 300-page capital improvement plan, but I don't see the full plan on there. I think we ran into this problem last year as well. I'm just wondering where, when can we expect the full CIP plan to be on there? You know I like to go through the numbers, so that's, that's, that's my main intention, as well as making sure that the public is fully aware that the full document is up.
So Ms. Ahmed, as we've done in the last several years, we actually, that CIP is a working, a working plan. What we've learned in previous Board of Education meetings and in previous years, the board has requested that we listen to the community. We look at the community input, we do surveys, we engage. We work with the OBFA committee, which I believe this, this will go to next in the process. And ultimately, as we did last year, I think the last two years, we'll provide the full 300-page-plus document to the Board of Education seven to 10 days prior to your, the final meeting, which you'll vote on it. But we will try our hardest to continue to engage, continue to process. But as you know, this is a pretty iterative process, and we've gotten trouble in the past from the board in kind of making up our mind before we've listened to what your input was and what the community was, and we're trying our hardest to be reflective in that space.
All right, thank you so much.
And Dr. Golson, Mr. Rose, we sincerely appreciate that. And Ms. Williams and Ms. Queen, we look forward to your committee's engagement regarding this question. Any other questions regarding the first reader presentation? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the approval is unanimous. Colleagues, we will have, under nine, one, we will have follow-up items from our June 25th meeting, a special board meeting that will be posted upon receipt. And at this point, a motion to approve actions in the executive session is in order. Motion to approve actions that we dealt with regarding a report from the CEO regarding the administration of the school system. Discuss, we discussed personnel matters and made appointments and reassignments. And we decided on two appeals, and we discussed investigative proceedings involving the school system. A motion is in order to approve items taken in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably moved to seconded that items that I mentioned in the executive session be approved. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Though the ayes have it, and Ms. King, let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Colleagues, now a motion to adjourn the meeting. Well, before we adjourn, let me remind the board that I look forward to seeing you all and Dr. Golson, Mr. Rose tomorrow morning at nine. There will be a full-course meal. You know, the last time we met in retreat, you know, we met at the Doubletree, remember? We had great food. Unfortunately, that won't be the case. But we look forward to a full day tomorrow, colleagues. We're going to not rush things, but if our agenda gets completed before necessary, we will do that. We obviously have to respect the public's right to be involved, so we can't just change things without. We can certainly adjust the executive session part, but the public's part, we're gonna have to try to make sure that public is engaged. So I look forward to seeing all of you tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Before we adjourn, Ms. Queen?
Yeah, I just have a question. I mean, I need a point of clarification or understanding. I brought this up before and I heard you talk about it, but I thought we were gonna start having the public speak. And I heard you talk about sending letters and videos. Were any letters sent in or any videos? Because I didn't hear that, I think.
Yeah, we, and that's, this is an issue, colleagues, that I want you to continue to think through with us right now. We, we made available to the public the opportunity to send video recordings of their comments or written testimony. We've not received any, but I certainly would encourage the public to, those who can, to video their recording in one, three minutes, if you can't do that, to provide written testimony to the board. We will post those on our board docs for the public to see or hear.
Okay. My, my question is, I don't mean, why came, just like the county council, when they, they had us to speak, I spoke live right in the middle of their meeting. They had us just call in a certain time and then they, I mean, it was a certain way you call in. Why couldn't we do that? Because I think the purpose of it is for the public to be able to hear it.
And the public, and I'm not suggesting that we won't do it that way because that's an excellent idea. We've been interacting with the council in terms of their technology capacity to do that, so it is something that we're thinking.
Okay, so let's discuss that. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I don't know if you, Ms. Queen, you were saying we'll be discussing that some tomorrow or something like that, but I just wanted to remind just to the previous point that I made, if this is a point for Ms. King or whoever it goes for, our meeting should be really easily accessible. It should not be that difficult for, for folks in the community to find it. I'm glad to volunteer my time for maybe an hour or so tomorrow or in the next week because I think it's an easy fix, and I think we should just put a link on the website so folks can click it and join. So that's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. King, that's something that we will deal with immediately with the assistance of Dr. Golson and her staff. Okay, colleagues, a motion to adjourn our meetings.
Oh, move, make that motion. I move.
I'm not gonna recognize you for, because you've done it three times. So someone else make the motion, please. Okay, colleagues, thank you all so much. So those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it, and I'll see you all tomorrow morning. Thank you all.
Have a good one.
Bye, bye.